I'm going to call the Foster Town Council meeting for February 8th to order. If everyone would please stand to pledge the flag.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the people of the citizens, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public comment. I do have a couple of announcements I want to make, all regarding Grant Planner. The grant accepted an award, I believe it was, Grant, today for the comprehensive plan. So, excellent.
It's, yeah, how many, how many years?
How many years? Thank you. It's taken a long time. Thank you. To Grant and the planning board for completing that. Also, Grant has been accepted into the Leadership Municipal Leadership Academy. There were quite a few applicants and Grant has been selected to be a participant.
What, what is it that?
It's with the, oh my gosh, you just, thank you. League of City and Towns, they were looking for applicants. I said Grant and Grant applied and brought to Grant's attention and he applied and he got accepted.
Excellent.
I think that's who goes to.
Congratulations.
It was evidently a very. Yes, there you go. I will take the consent agenda at this time. Second. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I will accept a motion at this time to move number two under old business, police building update to this point in time.
So note.
Thank you. All in discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed. Moving to, Mr. Brayton is here to fill us in on the update. Could you come up front, please? Thank you. And you have to press the button.
Does he need any?
No, he has one. But you have to.
Okay, I believe since the last council meeting, we have, the architect has drawn two different floor plans for revision to the police station, hopefully to reduce the cost. We, the police chief and myself and captain reviewed it, the committee's seen it. It was a pretty good plan, but it still looked a little expensive to, to build. So since then, they've, we've reconfigured a few things. We have a second floor plan, which I think is going to work. I think it's going to reduce the cost quite a bit. Again, it's going to be, so now it'll be a one-story building, no basement, no attic. It's going to add some square footage to the building, but the square footage being added to the one-story building will be cheaper than using the attic or use in the basement. So. Yes.
So is the added space for records storage, because taking out the basement eliminated that, right? And utilities?
Yeah.
You can leave yours on, boy.
Okay, there we go. Yeah, so all the plans did not have enough closet space. It basically was a small janitor closet, there was no storage space. The new plan has several closets and it has a storage room. The police department's required to keep records, I guess, pretty much ever. And there was really no space without the basement for this. So the, the latest floor plan has quite a bit of space, quite a bit of storage and closet space.
Is that, that for like records and evidence too? It'll be just?
Records, evidence, supplies.
Gordy, I have a concern. So I, I contacted two contractors, one of which you know. And we used, we used an example of a 3,000 square foot footprint.
Okay.
So I said, if I have a 3,000 square foot footprint, I generally have a 3,000 square foot basement. If I eliminate the basement, how much do I save? How much do I realize in savings? So, pretty much what we thought, but the, the discussion was, you still have to have a footing. You still have to do excavation. And you really are still going to pay a contractor to come and drop off the forms, set everything up. You're going to save, you're going to realize in real savings about $100,000 in concrete, but you're going to lose 3,000 square foot of space.
You talked to a residential contractor?
I talked to David Paleese.
Yeah.
And I talked to my cousin Frank, who's a commercial builder.
So, to give you an idea, I found out that the basement from the original plan was $600,000. To go to.
That was the 11-foot basement?
The 11-foot basement.
Which is not, we know, is it necessary?
To go to, to go to a footing with a slab, we're probably looking at, at the worst case, $200,000. Big difference. But it's also very expensive to, to, to utilize that basement. If it, it was just a basement for storage, there's not a big expense other than a $400,000, $500,000 to put it in. Additional $400,000. But to utilize that space, we're putting two stairways in that are very expensive because they have to be graded stairways. And there needs to be two. There's ventilation, there's moisture control, there's drainage. That, that got very expensive. So it's more than just the cost of the foundation.
I'm glad you did the work.
I was totally surprised myself at this.
Yeah, because my concern was, is that we initially started with a $500,000 or $600,000 basement that was 11-foot walls with a 12-inch thickness, which we didn't need. So I wanted, but now you bring to light two really good points, three actual real good points. So thank you for clarifying.
It still is an 11-foot tall basement with 12-inch walls. Originally, the architect had it at a 16-inch wall.
Yeah, okay.
But honestly, the, the amount of engineering that went into that 11-foot basement is crazy.
Okay.
And the excavating, we got fairly good soil there, but because 11-foot, they want to take all the material away and bring cleaner material.
Yeah.
That added, that's not in the $600,000 additional.
So you feel comfortable that the trade-off of losing the square footage in the basement is going to be worth it in the end? With, we have expandability?
If I had my choice, honestly, I'd want the basement with the extra footage, but we haven't got the money.
Okay.
And, all right, and I, I'm hoping we're looking at several million dollars.
Perfect. Nope, that's the, we gotta get it built, so that's good.
I mean, we, the, the original plan is still here.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're going to see. Right at the moment, I was kind of hoping the architects would be done with it, but they're putting together a quote to how much it'll cost us to have this building redesigned. Or, it won't be totally redesigned, but to make modifications. But it's taken a while because they have to get it out to the civil engineer, the structural engineer, the mechanical engineer. All those people have done their part before they can place to do it.
Gordy, that, that's something that they can live with for years. I mean, I, I didn't like to see the basement removed either. I know it's money and it's constraints on money. But is like what you're adding on different rooms going to be sufficient for how long?
The only thing you're losing in the basement is the store, the very large storage area and the option to put a few more rooms down there.
Worth the utilities down there also?
Yeah, but we added, we added several thousand feet to the, you know, footprint of the building, which we got the utilities into it, the locker rooms, the store, this, what we hope is being on storage.
That space that you're adding is going to accommodate all of that?
Everything but, everything but the empty space we would have future use. But the bill, on the other hand, you know, the building, the way it's designed, we can add on to the building. Hope, I can't imagine we will unless the population triples or more, or we get, or we get much more commercials. Is it what? Yeah, I, I think, I think the way, that's, that's in the plan. How, how the building is located on the property is in the plan for future expansion.
Thank you, Gordy.
Thank you.
Joy Hocky.
Thank you, Gordy.
So at this point, we'll move on to the public hearing. If we could have the, ready?
Okay, I'm still on. All right, on January 25th, 2024, the Foster Town Council will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM at 6th South Killenley Road, the Benjamin Eddy Building. On the agenda will be a discussion of 15 zoning ordinances recommended by the planning board at its October 18th and November 1st meetings. The recommendations include amendments in additions to 15 foster, I'm sorry, foster zoning ordinances. Section 38-231, non-conforming by dimension. Section 38-271, purpose of article. Section 38-293.
That's the, it's the second hearing that's being, right? That legal adds for the second hearing, yep.
Oh, you're in the wrong one. I'm, I'm just going by number. Sorry about that. All right, so, so scratch all of that. I don't know, I'll just start from the beginning. On February 8th, 2024, the Foster Town Council will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM at 6th South Killenley Road, Benjamin Eddy Building. On the agenda will be discussion of nine zoning ordinances. One soil erosion and sediment control ordinance, three animals ordinances, and 17 business ordinances recommended by the planning board at its November 15th, 2023, December 7th, 2023, and January 3rd, 2024 meetings. The recommendations include amendments to the foster zoning ordinance, section 38-63, powers and duties. Section 30-64, voting. Section 38-65, application procedure. Section 38-67, decisions and records. Section 38-232, existence by variance or special use permit. Section 38-359, land development projects. Section 38-387, pre-submission conference. Section 38-388, contents of site plan. And section 38-467, development not requiring planning board or zoning board approval. The recommendations include amendments to the soil erosion and sediment control ordinance, section 26-121, site plan review fees. The recommendations include amendments to the animals ordinance, section 8-216, class, section 8-221, fees, and section 8-222, renewal. The recommendations include amendments to the business ordinance, section 12-31, renewal or transfer. Section 12-34, license for sale of alcohol. Section 12-35, license for entertainment. Section 12-36, license for campground. Section 12-37, license for hotel slash motel. Section 12-38, license for pawn shop. Section 12-39, license for sale of secondhand articles. Section 12-40, license for private detective. Section 12-41, license for theater. Section 12-42, license for auto repair. Section 12-43, license for preparing food, victualling. Section 12-44, license for automobile junkyard. Section 12-45, license for flea market. Section 12-46, license for retail slash holiday sales. Section 12-47, and license for gravel banks, natural material processing, stone crushing, and sorting, mining, quarrying. Section 12-40, I'm sorry, 96, application fee, renewal fee. And section 12-162, license issuance, fees, limitations. Copies of the proposed amendments, additions, and removals can be found online at Copies can also be obtained from the Foster Planning Office during regular business hours. The proposed amendments, additions, and removals may be altered or amended prior to the close of the public hearing without further advertising as a result of further study or because of the views presented for comment in the course of the hearing. Individuals requiring interpretive service must notify the town clerk's office at 401-392-9200 at least 72 hours in advance of the hearing date by order of the town council, Susan M. Dillon, town clerk.
Thank you. This is the first hearing, so as you know by now, the council will not be voting on it tonight, but we're open to the public. So Grant, do you want to get started with the very first one, which is section 8-216 classes?
Yes, and I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. So, section 8-216 classes divides kennel licenses into a class A and a class B. Class A licenses are breeding kennels and class B licenses are boarding kennels. And what's being proposed here is meeting the state law sections pertaining to on class A breeding kennels and on class B boarding kennels and additionally under class A removing zoning districts which are no longer in existence in the town.
Grant, do we have any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Oh. Anybody? Thank you.
So section 8-221 fees. What's being proposed here is a development plan review because kennels are businesses, any business, and fosters require to go in front of the planning board for a development plan review. So we cite the application fee for that type of application, and that's the entirety of that proposal. Yes. Yep. So, yes, either a class A or a class B, so it would be a, a business, and yeah, it would be the same fee.
Any, any questions in regards to this or any concerns? Thank you. Go ahead, Grant, to section 12-31.
I have a section 8-222 renewal, is that accurate?
Thank you.
So, section 8-222 renewal. This just specifies that the renewal of a kennel license does not require a development plan to be by the planning board. The town clerk would just issue any fees for the renewal to the town treasurer. So only an initial license for a kennel would have to go in front of the planning board.
Have any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Thank you. Now, section 12-31.
So 12-31 is currently titled renewal or transfer. So we're proposing that it be titled application renewal or transfer. And the primary reason for adding the word application in all over the place in addition to renewal or transfer is a background check should be required for initial applications only. Currently, a background report or a BCI is required by the police department for renewals or transfers, but once you're in, the, the planning board is proposing that no further background report would be required. There's also two additions under subsection five and six. Under subsection five, I added in that the council would hold a public hearing for a business, but I, I don't necessarily think that would be the best idea because then we would be requiring businesses to go to two public hearings, one in front of the planning board and then one in front of the council. So I would propose disregarding subsection five. And subsection six is the proposal for all businesses to require a dumpster and basically the business could choose how large or small the dumpster needs to be to fit however much garbage they produce.
Thank you. Does anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns? Could you come forward and state your name and address? Thank you.
It is. So if you have a BCI gone, then it's, it's fine. And then you do some horrendous act. Six months down the road, two months down the road, a year down the road, there's no way that the town man can take another look at whatever the business that may be? I, I just think that that opens us up some, some potential liability.
Grant, do you want to answer that? Do you have an answer for that? Because that was one of my questions.
Yep, so I would say that if somebody did something absolutely terrible, they might wind up being, I don't know if incarcerated is the right term, but if they did something bad and got away with it, not necessarily. So, no, I guess I don't have a, a great answer for that. But that's what's proposed. It would only be for the initial application. Generally, I would say that I would encourage people to turn their lives around. So I guess that's the best thing I could come up with.
It, it would be a concern. I think that we might want to look into that further. Chief, you need to come forward. Thank you.
If I understand this correctly, once the initial application is completed for any business, any business, cars, horses, whatever, right? You, there's no, a bar, anything, there's no, that application is good until, it's good how long? One year, and then they have to reapply, right? They only have one B.
Understanding though, that it's only the initial, so if they renew, there would not be another BCI check done. It's only the initial, am I correct, Grant? The initial application or renew or transfer would require a BCI check. But if you're renewing your license, there would not be a BCI check.
Well, that's a slippery slope. And the reason I say that is because it depends on the business, okay? And it depends on the crime. And who are we to determine what crime prevents somebody from continuing their business? Whether, you know, if they have a, if they have a, they board horses and they leave the scene of an accident, that has nothing to do with, one thing has nothing to do with the other. So you may see that on their BCI, but I think it's a slippery slope and I think it depends on the business. I think we need to look into this more because, and I think that, that would be my recommendation, that we look into this more and have a plan for a reapp when they do come up for a reapplication. How you're going to handle the BCI. I think we need to sit down and talk about that. Because it's, there's too many variables.
You'd have to come up again. Thank you.
Is if you are boarding horses, you know, then, then there's a certain amount of responsibility. If you're running a daycare, it's a whole different ballgame. It's a whole different ballgame. So someone that, that, you know, has a minor offense that, that's dealing with horses is going to be viewed as something much different than if they're doing something that, you know, you're responsible for kids. That's my own concern.
I guess I would say it's important to recognize that currently the procedure is to require a BCI only upon a renewal or transfer. So somebody could apply and not have to be required to have a BCI, they could get in. And then I guess it would come up a year later. But I, I do agree that the severity of offenses would, and the connection to the business they're running would be, we'd leave the faith in the police department to make appropriate decisions, but it, it should probably be thought about more.
We should.
I like that, Grant, because as the chief said and as this gentleman pointed out, if we make a blanket ordinance that covers all applicants, we need to look at it in that fashion. So I, I agree with Denise and I agree with the gentleman that. I was going to use the analogy of a daycare. So if we're going to make a blanket renewal policy, I think the blanket policy should be, a BCI should be required. That's just my opinion, because I don't think we can be hurt if we require a BCI.
That's what I was going to say, David. I was going to say the same thing. That used to go help at the school, and the school requires it every year.
And then who makes the determination of whether it's, if there's a crime? That would. Okay, all right. I just, I just, I mean, I guess that needs to be clarified.
It could be, a solution could be as simple as striking out the proposed three words for applications only. So the, the police department would require a background report for an application renewal or transfer. The town would, but the police department would can, conduct the background report, yeah.
Thank you. Mrs. Dillon, you had your hand raised.
Yeah, there's a lot of businesses that we don't even license. We license them at the beginning and then they don't have to come, like, liquor stores, yes. Daycares, no. There's no daycare license that we have currently. I'm sorry. But the town doesn't. Okay. Yeah, there's quite a few that, you know, you see our licenses, we don't have a lot of business licenses out there. So the ones that you're talking about, if it's the state is doing it, then how do we even know?
Regarding revocation?
There is, there is a, there is a safety net in, or in place already.
Okay. All right.
But I think it's still something we need to look into further. Thank you, Grant. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns? Thank you, Mrs. Rayo. Okay, moving on to 12-34.
Okay, 12-34, license for sale of alcohol. The planning board's proposing increasing the fee from whatever it currently is. Sue, do you know what the fee for, they're all different. I, I know that that one is more than $100, so the planning board recommended increasing the license fee for the sale of alcohol to $500 from what it currently is and the renewal fee would match the initial license fee.
Oh, okay, good.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this?
Emily, oh, Ben. I'm just concerned. I, I just want to know how big of a jump it is. I mean, I know going up to $100 isn't a big jump. I just want to see how big of an increase that is.
Thank you. So each year they would have to pay the $500?
Correct, yeah, every, every time it's renewed.
Thank you. I'm going to, just for time's sake, I'm going to move on because this is just the first hearing, so we can move on with that. So Grant, section 12-35, license for entertainment.
So that's a similar concept. The license for entertainment is currently higher than, that fee is currently most, higher than most business licenses. So the planning board is proposing increasing the license for entertainment fee from what it currently is to $300, and $300 would be paid upon renewal as well.
Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this? I'm assuming again, we want to see how much it was previously to increase.
Yes. Because chances are the places that sell alcohol are also going to have the entertainment.
My thoughts too, right.
So that makes it $800.
Right. Right, so I think we need to look into that. Too many times. Moving on to license for campground, section 12-36.
Okay, so I believe all of the business sections moving forward have license fees of $25. So the, okay, so campground's 50. Campground is 50 and the planning board is proposing increasing it to $100 for both issuance and renewal.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Mrs. Rayo, I'm going to ask you to come forward, and you have to state your name and address.
My name's Anna Rau, and I'm concerned about the campground. And I want to know who is serving the, the ambulances for the camp ground.
We do. We do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can bring it down to, towards you. There you go. Okay, alright. Yes, the insurances would pay.
So I think this money which we are asking for is got down sheet. Because if we have supplied the ambulances and fire and all that stuff. That they have to pay for that. How big is the campground?
I don't know, Mrs.
Maybe it's hundred, maybe it's two hundred. I don't know. I have no idea, but.
So you think that it should be more than a hundred dollars?
They have to pay more.
My, my concern there is that they're, they're taxpayers as well. Like, like all.
You know how much they pay?
I don't, because we have. No, we have a few different ones. But we have a few different ones, but the, the bigger ones, their property taxes would be higher because they're bigger. But what I'm saying is that they, we all pay for our fire and rescue services, and they'd be.
But it's a business. That's not a individual household. Let's take that into consideration, because that may be a lot of money.
Thank you, Mrs. Rayo.
I'm just concerned about discriminating against one from the other, if they're all campgrounds. I don't know how you would do that, how you'd separate them. That's my concern.
If you separate campground. Right, right, you can't. Right, right, yeah. Okay, so what was pointed out is that you can't say you're from Connecticut. So we can't provide you with rescue services. You're saying the whole campground needs to pay extra. We will take that into consideration. Thank you. Yes, all campgrounds. Yes, thank you. Grant, moving on to. Section twelve dash thirty-seven, license or hotel motel.
So section twelve thirty-seven proposes increasing the license fee for both, uh, the initial. Application and for the renewal to be one hundred dollars for a license for a hotel or a motel. And I believe, again, my understanding was the rest of the. Sections were associated currently with twenty-five dollar application fees.
Maybe that's something that we can find out for the next meeting.
I'll bring the list. I based all of these on the list that, um, the town clerk has.
Right. So maybe just for us, for the next meeting, we can have that information. Thank you, Grant.
I have a motel, I, and I don't license it through the town at all. It's through, all through the state.
So I believe the town has a license for a hotel and motel on that form currently.
I, I've never. It's, oh, for a brand new.
So maybe there wasn't one.
A new application, no, no.
Initial, thank you. Anyone with any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Thank you. Grant, moving on to section twelve dash thirty-eight, license for a pawn shop.
Would it be possible to. Combine all of the rest of these ordinances, because each proposal is the same thing. It goes from the existing fee to one hundred dollars.
Can we do that?
Yep, okay, so section twelve thirty-eight, license for pawn shop. Section twelve thirty-nine, license for sale of secondhand articles, license, uh, sorry. Section twelve dash forty, license for private detective. Section twelve dash forty-one, license for theater. Section twelve dash forty-two, license for auto repair. Section twelve dash forty-three, license for preparing food, victualling. Section twelve dash forty-four, license for automobile junkyard. Section twelve dash forty-five, license for flea market. Section twelve dash forty-six, license for retail holiday sales are all proposed to increase from the initial. Uh, license fee of what it is existing to one hundred dollars. And the renewal fee would be proposed to be the same as the initial license fee.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. That, that was going to be my question. So what, um, council has said is that this. Some of these are for renewal, not for initial, because some of them are no longer allowed and they're grandfathered in. So if they're grandfathered in and they're renewing, then yes. But if they're, don't come looking for a junkyard.
Right.
Okay, thank you. So any questions or concerns regarding this? I would need you to step forward, state your name and address, please.
Lynn Ryder Burgess Road. The only question I had, and I'm not sure it's these, but in the old ordinance, it would have. Twenty-five dollars, but then if it was bigger, it was a hundred. So is this just a straight one hundred, no matter how, what the size of the enterprise is? Okay.
Thank you. Is, is there any questions or concerns any further?
So. There is one more section that I left out, just because there's a little bit of a distinction.
Any questions or concerns? Okay, go ahead, Grant, thank you.
Uh, section twelve dash forty-seven, license for gravel banks, natural material processing. Stone crushing and sorting, mining, quarrying. Um, the same thing would apply. Uh, the current application fee or the current license fee would be increased to one hundred dollars, as would the renewal fee. And then for those types of earth removal, extraction kind of uses. Uh, prior to renewal of a license for any of those uses, inspection of the premises. Shall be made by the zoning enforcement officer to determine that the conditions of the special use permit. All of those uses require a special use permit, and of the soil erosion and sediment control plan are being complied with. Um, so then following, um, in the event that there was a denial, following that denial, um, of a license renewal. Uh, or the expiration or withdrawal of a permit, or upon voluntary. Secitation of operations, or upon completion of removal in a substantial area. The entire area shall be restored insofar as permitted by Rhode Island D E M as follows. Uh, all land shall be graded so that no slope exceeds one foot vertical rise in three feet horizontal distance. And shall be graded. And shall be so graded as to safely provide for drainage without erosion. Uh, all boulders larger than half of a cubic yard shall be removed or buried. The entire area except exposed ledge rock shall be covered with not less than four inches of good quality loam. Which shall be planted with cover vegetation adequate to prevent soil erosion using either grasses or ground cover depending upon conditions. And lastly, the performance bond associated with that use shall not be released until sufficient time has lapsed. To ascertain that the vegetation planted has successfully been established. And that drainage is satisfactory. So basically, once you no longer are using your land for any of those purposes. Um, you would need to, uh, bring the property back to its, um, natural state, so to speak.
Remediation.
Correct.
And, um, I don't know, it sounded, at the beginning, it kind of sounded like that, do, do you need a soil and sediment erosion control plan? When you're going to do that, is that another part of that?
Yeah, and I, I believe that's, that's an existing requirement for any of those uses. You would need a soil erosion.
When you're remediating it, you have to, you have to do that again. Okay.
What's, what size rocks, did you say?
Um, that would be half a cubic yard.
So. People wouldn't be able to use those rocks as a wall? You need to bury them.
Or remove them, correct.
So they, they can't use them as a wall?
No, not, not by how this is recommended. They would not be able to use those boulders as a wall.
Thanks.
Anyone who has, any have questions or concerns regarding this, I need you to go to the front and state your name. I'm going to ask the council for a few minutes for the audience first. Thank you.
Uh, Lynn Ryder Burgess Road. Um, I'm wondering, I didn't think we allowed mining. And I was trying to look through the old ordinances, what's allowed and what's not allowed. And it was, you know, kind of confusing because, um. Well, I'll talk to Grant about that later. But as far as the restoration goes. I think that's a great idea, because I know up behind me, up behind you. Um, there was quite a large concern, and, um. It, it, if you look at aerial photographs is last year, it is a wasteland. And there are ponds and it's uphill, so I can't imagine what these rains have done. And what that water has done. It also is an attractive nuisance. Because it has also become a fun place to. Do things. So that's my only question. Oh, and as far as the oil and, uh, sediment control, I think you have to have that initially. And that's just for when you are doing your graveling or whatever, you've got to put hay bales or you got to do this or that. So you're not, as you're doing it, destroying land, not, that doesn't follow to, I guess the remediation is something different.
Srida and Grant, when you, we don't allow mining and excavation for profit anymore.
Um, so looking at the old table, one of the uses for mining, um, mining, quarrying or loam stripping. Is permitted by special use permit, and in the new table of uses, uh, we grouped all of these, uh. Op- operations that are in the title of the section into one section of the table of uses, because they're all similar in nature.
Okay. So you're right, you're exactly right. When you go in, if we were to go in and, and mine. Extract rock or whatever, just for sale. It's, generally now it's prohibited. We went through it with the, uh, same, we went through with the property on ninety-four. Um, yeah, welcome. I caught myself. So you, um, you're right, you have to have a plan. To mitigate the damage from erosion and runoff and everything, which is, we had to go through with that property. So it is true that there was a process in place, but, um, this is something, as you said. Now the plan is to not leave the soil in a state of disrepair and, and, and just leave it a wasteland. Grant, as Grant said, it's going to be to restore it to a natural setting, which I think is an excellent idea. Being a, a butter.
Any other questions or concerns at this time? Thank you, Grant, go ahead.
Okay, so the next one is twelve ninety-six, which is the application fee and renewal fee for firearms dealers. So currently, this one's listed in the ordinance, the application fee for a firearms dealer is seventy-five dollars. So that is proposed to increase to one hundred dollars, and, uh, state law requires that. The renewal license fee or the actual issuance of a license comes with a fee of five dollars. We were, we would not be allowed to increase that fee any higher. Um, so a separate license would also be required for sale of items not associated with firearms. So if a firearms dealer wanted to sell like t-shirts or what have you, some kind of retail license would be required. That might not be a great example, but. I think the picture is, is clear.
Any questions or concerns from the audience? Mrs. Rayo, you need to come up front.
Yes, one question. My name is Anna Rau. How many firearm dealers are in Foster right now?
I don't know off the top of my head. Right, there is one on Route Six, but there are several. There are also private ones. Were in their homes, they sell them in their homes, but they also have to go through. At federal licensing, et cetera. So, but. People, some, yes, those that need to know, know. I don't know off the top of my head where they are. Maybe we don't want people to know where they are.
Mrs. Rayo, with all due respect, there's, there's multiple layers of licensing for firearms dealer. And they are well-known, very well-known where and who they are. There's no secret. It's not possible. If, if they were selling them in secret, it would be illegal. So no, we do know where they are. We just don't know it right now in front of us who they are.
Okay, okay, I just want to know how they learn next to my house. So that was, I have to get my two.
Go ahead.
Okay, so the next section is twelve dash one sixty-two. Which is, it covers licenses for hawkers, peddlers, door-to-door salespersons and mobile food establishments. And there's a table at the very end of this section. For a fee schedule, and the hawker fee has a minimum of ten dollars and a maximum of fifty dollars. Peddler, same thing, minimum of ten dollars, maximum of fifty dollars. Mobile food establishment, ma- uh, minimum of twenty-five dollars. And, um, a maximum, it seems to be either fifty or twenty-five dollars, depending. Okay, so a single one would be fifty dollars, for two, it would be twenty-five dollars, that would equal fifty dollars. Um, an event permit currently has a minimum of seventy-five dollars. Um, and a maximum of three hundred dollars. And an event permit and a mass gathering permit has a minimum of one hundred dollars and a maximum of three hundred dollars. So what's being proposed is removing the minimum, only having one fee. And for a hawker, that fee would be one hundred dollars. For a peddler, that fee would also be one hundred dollars. Mobile food establishments are proposed to be left alone. Um, event permits should probably be reduced to one hundred dollars as the fee instead of three hundred dollars. And event permits and mass gathering permits. Um, the fee would just be one hundred dollars. And I'm not sure exactly where the distinction would be made. As to if one person would be allowed to have a minimum fee of ten dollars if they were a hawker, for instance, but another hawker would need. A fee of fifty dollars. It seems to make more sense to be uniform.
Any questions or concerns regarding this? One, one minute, just give, give me one second. Any questions or concerns? Can you come to the table? Thank you.
Yes, I would like to know what a hawker is.
Do you have a definition of hawker?
Uh, I don't.
Julie is looking that up, one second.
I, a peddler, I, no, but what is a hawker?
Looking that up right now, Mrs. Rayo.
A person who offers goods for sale by shoving his or her wares on the street or going door to door. So if you're a door-to-door salesman.
No door-to-door, no.
We don't, that's the definition of hawker.
And, but we need to have it in a court. This might be Webster's, but we're looking at Foster's. Okay, that is not allowed, Mrs. Rao. Okay, so cannot have door-to-door salesmen. But that's not allowed in Foster. Thank you. Grant. Go ahead.
So the next section is twenty-six dash one twenty-one, site plan review fees. And this is under the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control, uh, chapter of the Code of Ordinances. And all that's being proposed here is matching the current subdivision application fees from the subdivision chapter. To the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Chapter, because currently, um, these review fees are not. Um, accurate, and there's even a potential for a one hundred plus lot subdivision. I mean, we would just remove. I mean, we would just remove it and say major subdivisions create 10 lots or more. Follow the application fee for a major subdivision. And usually in Foster, we'd never see a subdivision of that many lots. You'd need to have 3,000 feet of frontage.
Questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Thank you.
Okay, so Section 38-63 is the powers and duties of the zoning board. And what's being proposed here is to add language, remove language that meets state law. The specific section is 452457.
Any questions or concerns regarding this? Okay, moving on, Grant.
Section 38-64 Voting, the same concept as the last ordinance. We are adding and removing language to meet state law, specifically Rhode Island General Law, Section 452457. But this is subsection two. The previous section was referring to subsection one of that same state statute.
Any questions or concerns regarding this? Thank you. Moving on.
Section 38-67 Application Procedure. This involves.
38-65.
Yeah, what did I say, 67?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Section 38-65 Application Procedure. This is proposing to remove the term site plan review because Rhode Island General Law has replaced the term site plan review as an application with the term development plan review. And the zoning official would be replaced with the administrative officer because applications are received by the administrative officer rather than the zoning.
And this is state. Once again, they're coming in.
The very minor. This, not anything that's of substance that's really changing here.
Previously has been substance.
Yes, but this is, we're getting to the more minor ones.
I, yeah, well, we won't get Denise going again. Is there any questions or concerns regarding this? I have a lot, but go ahead. Go ahead, Grant.
Okay, so Section 38-67 Decisions and Records. This is proposing adding language to meet state law, specifically Rhode Island General Law 4524-61. And it's important to note as well that the previous section is a newly amended state statute. But 3863, 3864, and 3867 are all state statutes that were unchanged, but Foster's code did not meet the current Rhode Island General Law statutes.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions or concerns regarding that? Go ahead, Grant.
Section 38-232 Existence by Variance or Special Use Permit. There is only one. Well, I guess four words being added to this ordinance. And it's to meet the new state requirement for Unified Development Review, which is where the planning board has the authority to make a decision on a special use permit or variance to decide upon zoning relief. Where that zoning, zoning relief also has a component of subdivision or land development approval. So an applicant would go to one meeting rather than going to two meetings previously. It would be a planning board meeting and a zoning board meeting. Now it's done at once.
Any questions or concerns about that? Hearing none. Moving on.
Section 38-359 Land Development Projects. This is an extremely lengthy ordinance. This is being required by state law. Previously, this was optional and essentially the concept here is that if you have a land development with multiple units or multiple uses, there are specific regulations that now are required to be put forward. The town is able to choose what its regulations are. But in the past, we did not have a procedure for providing further regulations for land development projects involving multiple uses or units. So at this point, we're required to do so. So some of the review criteria would be relating to what uses are permitted within a land development project that exceeds a single-family residence. The number of commercial uses that could be within a land development project. Conditions regarding roads, density bonuses, open space, land dedicated to the town. And any additional requirements come from existing sections of the zoning ordinance and are being proposed.
Any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Okay, thank you, Grant. Go ahead.
The next one is Section 38-387 Pre-Application Conference. This is a case where there's a definition for a pre-application conference in the definition section of the Zoning Enabling Act. And generally, I think it's a good idea to give applicants the option to meet with either the planner, the building official, whoever would be appropriate. Any town staff prior to submitting an application that makes the applications, the process run smoother than coming to a meeting and finding out there's more that needs to be submitted.
That makes sense. Any questions or concerns? That one I'll agree with. Any questions or concerns regarding this? Hearing none. Grant, go ahead.
Section 38-388 Contents of Site Plan. This is strictly verbiage. So basically vesting rights is something that is written in the ordinance currently. The term should be vested rights and the town planner can be referred to as the administrative officer. So that's all that's being proposed there.
Any questions or concerns regarding this? Thank you. Hearing done. Moving on.
And lastly, for this hearing, Section 38-467 Development Not Requiring Planning Board or Zoning Board Approval. We're just proposing that the building inspector be referred to as the building official. And if a development doesn't require planner or zoning board approval, it would just simply require a building permit.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns regarding this? That concludes those ordinances. I'm going to do my three for three. Is there anyone who has any objections to any of these ordinances at this time? Is there anyone who has any objections to these ordinance at this time? Third time, anyone that has any objections to these ordinances at this time? Anyone in favor of these ordinances at this time? Anyone in favor of these ordinances at this time? Third time, anyone in favor of these ordinances at this time? I'm going to close it to the audience and I'll open it up to the council. Do you have any questions or concerns at this time? I think, Grant, knowing what the previous fees were. And one of the other things I was thinking of, as you were saying, some of them went from $75 to $100. Some of them went from $25 to $100. Should we look at it to be proportionate or is it just that? You know, so some people went from a $25 fee to a $100 fee. But then some went from a $75 fee to a $100 fee. I understand maintaining that $100. But should it be proportionate so that that 75 might have gone to 150?
I could certainly run it by the planning board. I entirely defer to the planning board on business ordinances because there are people who are successful in business on that board. And I've never opened my own business or done anything like that. So I took their recommendations and they said fees of $100. It might have just been for simplicity. I'm not exactly sure.
That's what I'm wondering. It sounds like simplicity, but I'm concerned and I'm concerned about like a $500 fee because some of those those that sell alcohol and liquor, right? But they have the food, they have the entertainment, they have the, so I think we need to look at that.
So Grant, was there a study done how we compare to other communities of the same size?
Yes, and I believe the proposals, generally everything that's going to $100, a number of other municipalities charge higher fees.
I thought so. Thank you. Are we? Not that, not that it's my intention or the intention of the council to try to generate more funds, but are we grossly undercharging? Could it be that some should be higher and we're just trying to across the board unify to 100? Are we, are we really looking at these and studying up and seeing how we compare? As you know, we had the building fees for years. We had the building and zoning fees that were grossly undercharging people. We had to considerably come up to parity because we couldn't afford to pay our town workers to administer the paperwork with what we were charging. We're actually losing. So has there been any work, maybe you should take it back to the planning board and ask if, if there's been some reasonable consideration to how we measure up, even to go even parity, higher if need be.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And I think that's, that's exactly right, that currently the planning board feels that we are grossly undercharging for, for business license fees. And we could look into increasing or going proportional, whatever the, the measure the planning board thinks is appropriate is.
So I would appreciate that. Okay, moving on to our second hearing, and this is our second hearing, so the council may vote on this. I checked. Yes, yeah, I renumbered.
On January 25th, 2024, the Foster Town Council will conduct a public hearing at 6:00 PM at 6 South Killenley Road, the Benjamin Eddie Building. On the agenda would be discussion of 15 zoning ordinances recommended by the planning board at its October 18th and November 1st meetings. The recommendations include amendments and additions to 15 Foster zoning ordinances. Section 38-231 Non-Conforming by Dimension. 38-271 Purpose of Article. 38-293 Stonewall Protection and Preservation. Section 38-321 Procedure Generally. Section 38-322 Applicability of Article. Section 38-323 Standards for Granting Special Use Permits. Section 38-324 Issuances, I'm sorry, Issuance of Variances and Special Use Permits. Section 38-325 Unified Development Review. Section 38-326 Special Use Permit and Dimensional Variants. Section 38-327 Specific and Objective Criteria for Categories of Special Use Permits. 38-357 Development Standards for General Business Mixed-Use Development. Section 38-358 Development Standards and Purpose of Article. Section 38-394 Site Plan for Commercial and Industrial Development. And Section 38-395 Administrative Development Plan Review. Copies of the proposed amendments, additions and removals can be found online at HTTPS slash slash WWW.Townofoster.com slash Planning Department. Copies can also be obtained from the Foster Planning Office during regular business hours. The proposed amendments, additions and removals may be altered or amended prior to the close of the public hearing without further advertising as a result of further study or because of the views expressed at the public hearing. Any alteration or amendment must be presented for comment in the course of the hearing. Individuals requiring interpretive service must notify the town clerk's office at 401-392-9200 at least 72 hours in advance of the hearing date. By order of the Town Council, Susan M. Dillon, Town Clerk.
Thank you. Grant, do you want to start?
Sure. So the first section being proposed is 38-231 Non-Conforming by Dimension. So the proposal here is to include an example of a use that would be non-conforming by dimension that's cited in Rhode Island General Law. And that example is a building or structure containing a permitted number of dwelling units by the use regulations of the zoning ordinance, but not meeting the lot area per dwelling unit regulations is non-conforming by dimension. So it basically links this section with the definition section.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Hearing none. Continue, Grant.
Section 38-271 Purpose of Article. So we currently have, under the supplementary regulations article, that one of the purposes is to set forward specific standards for the granting of special use permits. But we already have those standards. They're under Article 7. And they're specifically listed under Section 38-323. So it's just not the appropriate article to reference standards for special use permits in.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Hearing none.
Section 38-293 Stonewall Protection and Preservation. So we currently have a pretty lengthy ordinance on Stonewall Protection and Preservation. And Foster Preservation Society informed me of some state laws regarding theft of historic stone walls. So it's proposed to add in provisions relating to theft of stone walls so that people know that those laws do exist and hopefully wouldn't steal stone walls.
Any questions or concerns regarding that? Hearing none. Go ahead, Grant.
Section 38-321 Procedure Generally and Issuance of Modifications. So modifications are basically a form of variance where the relief being requested is less than 25% of the area of a setback. So a 50-foot setback would have a 37 and a half foot area in which an application for modification could be applied for. And when an application for a modification is applied for, depending on the percentage associated with that modification, there are different procedures. So modifications of 5% or less could be approved by the zoning enforcement officer without any public notice requirements. Modifications of greater than 5% would be required to be published in the newspaper. Well, actually, let's see. That's not entirely correct. So modifications of greater than 5% would be the, only the abutting property owners would be notified by the zoning enforcement officer. And unless one of those abutting property owners objects in writing to the notice sent by the zoning enforcement officer, the modification would be approved. But if anybody does object, then the application would basically turn into a variance and notice would have to be printed in the newspaper at that point. So if nobody objected to the notice that they received for a modification, there would not be a hearing on the matter. It would simply be approved by the zoning enforcement officer. But if any of the property owners who were notified, all of those property owners are bordering the subject property. If any one of those property owners objects, there's automatically a need for a variance application.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns regarding that? Mrs. Rayo, can you go, Val, can you please go forward? Close the microphone down. Oh, thank you.
Yes, I have a problem with that particular zone. So anybody can actually take it by five feet or whatever from your property without you knowing about it.
No, that's not what that said. That's not what it said. Grant, can you elaborate more on that or repeat what you said about the five feet?
Yep. So basically, this modification procedure relates to if you wanted to say build a house. We got things in the area that was something that required you to build closer to a property line than would traditionally be allowed than.
This is not your property then, that is.
It could be anybody's property.
Oh, so they could take it away.
Anna, if you wanted to do a second.
I know, Mrs. Rao, this is what is happening. Mrs. Rao? So what happens is you have a piece of property and our ordinance is say you have to be so many feet away from your butters. But you have wetlands, so you can't put your house where it would fit. So you're going to still stay on your property, but you might be a little closer to your butter than you would have if that wetlands wasn't there. So you're not taking anybody's property. They're not taking your property. They're just saying you're going to be a little closer than what we would have if you didn't have any. we would have if you didn't have any wetlands.
If it's my property, I can understand it. But if an abutting neighbor does that, then it's not correct because it's my property where.
They're not going onto your property though, but what they're saying, so let me see, but for a picture of, so here's.
I will discuss it.
Here's your here's your, here's your property.
Yeah.
And here's your abutter's property, okay? And the abutter has wetlands over here. So they can't put their house where if there was no wetlands. Okay. So if there were no wetlands, to put it in the right place, they'd have to put it there. Right? But now they have wetlands, so they can't put their house there. They have to move it closer to here because of the wetlands. They're not taking your property. They're just moving their house a little closer to you. It's still on their property, but they're just moving it. They're not taking any of your property. It's still staying the same.
I have a question. If I would like to put a building on my property, how far away do I have to go from that property?
That's a question, that's a conversation to have with the planner or the building officials because that's it depends on the property, or it depends on the property, it depends on the building, it depends on the zone.
That means I cannot build my house where I want because it accommodate the other person.
If you can build it in the right place, then you have to build it in the right place. But if you've got wetlands that says, yeah, you can't, then we're going to let you would be able to come to the meeting and say, yeah, I don't want them closer to me. That would be up to you. But nobody's taking your property. Nobody's taking five feet. Nobody's taking any feet from your property.
Okay, I will find out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so.
Mrs. Ryder has a question. Mrs. Ryder, thank you.
Just a quick question. These uh, letters that would go out to um, abutters, will they be registered so that you know whether or not they got them?
I think there was some question about that.
This would be their one and only shot of, of saying no, right?
So we, we had talked about this previously. Am I correct, Grant?
Yeah, so every abutter notification requires some form of proof of mailing. It could be certified or it could be first class. What we use for first class mail is a form called, like, I think it's P S thirty eight one seven. Um, basically what that does is it shows proof that you mailed the abutters. And regarding the setbacks, um, every zoning district at this point has a thirty five uh, foot front setback and a fifty foot rear and side setback. So that is uniform across each zoning district. And if anybody was to encroach onto or into that setback exceeding twenty five percent, automatically that's a variance application. If you're under twenty five percent, it's a modification. Um, and if it's between five and twenty five percent of the way into that setback area, the abutters would be notified. And if any abutter objected to an application, it would turn into a traditional variance application. But if you had a modification of five percent or less, which would be, you know, three feet or so um, into a setback, the zoning enforcement officer could um, approve that without requiring notice.
Thank you. Moving, any other questions or concerns regarding this? Okay, moving on, Grant.
Uh, section thirty eight, three twenty two, uh, applicability of article. So this ordinance currently explains the procedure for uh, the zoning board granting a special use permit and the planning board granting subdivision relief. Uh, and those procedures need to change because they're no longer, that's no longer done during separate meetings. It's done under unified development review where the planning board could approve both. Uh, they would review both at the same meeting.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this? Hearing none. Continue, Grant.
Section thirty eight, three twenty three, standards for granting special use permits. Uh, there is an amendment to state law that recently came forward. Uh, section forty five, twenty four forty two, B three, says that you can no longer require a determination of consistency with the comprehensive plan in your consideration of a special use permit. So the reason for that is because the zoning ordinance is supposed to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan already. And um, we're also adding in uh, language that explains the unified development plan review provisions.
Thank you. Any questions or concern regarding this ordinance? Okay. Thank you. Continue, Grant. Thank you.
Section thirty eight, three twenty four, issuance of variances and special use permits. Um, this section we need to uh, list that modifications are able to be applied for and an application fee for modifications. Uh, we need to add in unified development plan review provisions. There are that's also unified development review under public notice, but we did also add a, a public hearing and notice uh, section where we refer um, all of the criteria for mailing abutters and notifying abutters. Uh, that's now under section thirty eight, thirty eight. So that's referenced. And there are some standards for granting variances that uh, state law now requires to be amended. One is that um, the zoning board or planning board reviewing a variance application could not factor in uh, could not hold an applicant, this against an applicant. The desire of the applicant to realize greater financial gain. So basically, if somebody wants to do something to uh, benefit themselves financially, that is allowed. But um, the zoning board or planning board would not be able to um, accept an economic disability as a reason for granting a variance. And the other thing that needs to be removed is that the relief to be granted is the least relief necessary. Um, somebody could basically decide that they wanted to place um, a structure uh, within a setback and um, it wouldn't need to be the least relief necessary.
Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding that? Hearing none. Go ahead, Grant.
Section thirty eight, three twenty five, unified development review. Uh, this is the procedure where the planning board is now authorized to make decisions on special use permits and variances if the request for a special use permit or variance comes with a land development or subdivision application.
Anyone have any questions or concerns regarding this? Continue, Grant.
Section thirty eight, three twenty six, dimensional variance in conjunction with a special use permit. Uh, this was previously optional. Um, now it's required. And it allows somebody to uh, apply for a variance and a special use permit at the same time and um, have both reviewed. And this would interestingly also um, kick into effect unified development review, um, although they're both zoning um, approvals and that comes from state law.
Any questions or concerns regarding this? Continue, Grant.
So section thirty eight, three twenty seven, specific and objective criteria for categories of special use permits. Um, we currently have uh, criteria for issuing special use permits. And uh, those criteria are listed in thirty eight, three twenty four and thirty eight, three twenty three. And so um, state law now says that we need to list those criteria for every single category of special use permit that exists in Foster. So um, my proposal is to keep the same criteria listed. It already is specific and objective. Um, the same criteria work for any use. So that's all that's being proposed there.
Any questions or concerns regarding this, Mrs. Ryder?
I just had a concern because there's there's a difference between thirty five chickens and thirty five horses or thirty five cows on five acres. So I don't know how this.
We had that discussion.
Right, how this, one size fits all.
We had that in our notes last time. Thank you.
So the um, discussion about the thirty five animals, that's the existing ordinance says that you need a special use permit for that. But to be honest, I don't even know if we could legally require that because right to farm might say that you're allowed to do that. So I think we would really just have to disregard that or bring the table of uses back and remove it. Um, but in general, um, the standards for special use permits are things relating to, is it in character with the neighborhood? Um, basically, like those kinds of things uh, are the criteria that are listed. It heavily involves, how does this give somebody an advantage over other property owners that may be considered unfair? Um, so those criteria could be applied generally to everything.
Grant, I want to make a suggestion, run it by you, see what you think. Why couldn't we simply classify the farm animals as small and large? Would the definition of small be under two hundred and fifty pounds and large be over two hundred and fifty pounds? Would that work to be able to bring more sense to the ordinance? Small animal, large animal, under two fifty, over two fifty.
So it could, but I still think that right to farm would um, cause some trouble. So basically, if we have an ordinance now that says you're allowed to keep fewer than thirty five animals by right on five acres, but then once you exceed thirty five animals on five acres, you need a special use permit. Um, I mean, categorizing the animals would only go so far as to help people explain, like, help understand larger animals, I guess, would be associated with a special use. But I still think right to farm would kind of get in the way of that.
But in all fairness, you're anticipating a widespread challenge. What I'm thinking is, is if I go into a town and I only have thirty five cows and five acres or forty five cows, to Mrs. Ryder's point, that makes sense to have that distinction. Most people may not challenge it, may not get to the state level for a definition. So I'm wondering if we might do better service to the public, to the residents, if we define it now. And for those folks who challenge it, we'll leave it to the attorney, the solicitor.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it does. And it's something that we could consider. I could write into.
Just consider it.
But don't you think that if you're raising animals, you're doing it mostly, cows, you're doing it for a profit. You're not going to overburden your land so that your animals don't produce. So I think it's kind of a mute issue. I don't.
I think where it comes up, where I've seen it, is if you have four and a half, if you have five and a half acres and you have fifty alpacas. Because alpacas are used for fur. Um, I think, I think maybe.
Like that might be. You think something like that might be uh, an encroachment on a neighbor? Because you have a lot of animals in a confined space. Cows and horses are the extreme. But there are medium sized animals like lodge sheep, lodge goats, alpacas, llamas. They're, they're not offensive, but it's just that they're big for a small area and, and they could create more of a concern for an abutter if we don't have a distinction.
I'm just wondering if perhaps D E M has certain criteria, because they're the ones who go in and say to someone who has a hoarding situation and say, no, you can't have that many animals. You can only have this many animals. I don't know if it's written somewhere.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns regarding this? Go ahead, Grant.
Oh, section thirty eight, three fifty seven, development standards for general business development. Um, there's currently a procedure that uh, states that an applicant for a, an existing business being expanded could be reviewed under development plan review, but any new business in the general business district um, would require a major land development, but that is um, no longer permissible by the state's changes in definitions to minor land developments and major land developments. Previously, uh, anything exceeding a residential development was considered a major land development. But at this point, the state has um, put into effect commercial uses that are considered minor land developments. Generally, if something is smaller than seventy five hundred square feet, it's considered minor. And that's a, a major concern in, in Foster, but we do have to comply with state law. So basically, we would have to review every application at face value instead of saying, okay, it's located here. So for that reason, we're going to elevate the review. We would get appealed and we would lose in, in court.
Any questions or concerns regarding this ordinance? Hearing none.
Uh, section thirty eight, three fifty eight is the same concept, but in the highway commercial two district. So um, we currently have standards because when I entered these in, I used the uh, I based them on the general business standards that were existing. And um, at this point, we could not uh, tell an applicant that they need to be reviewed as a major application. A major land development application when state law says that it's a minor land development application.
Any questions or concerns regarding this? Hearing none. Go ahead, Grant.
Well, section thirty eight, three sixty eight requirements and purpose of article. So this is citing variances and special use permits under Article nine. And Article nine relates to development plan reviews and um, land development projects. So uh, it's just not the appropriate place to list um, variances and special use permits or cover procedures for applications for those. That's already covered under Article seven.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns regarding this? Hearing none. Go ahead, Grant.
Section thirty eight, three ninety four, formal development plan review. So um, again, the state changed the uh, name site plan review or commercial site plan review to development plan review. And in addition to that, um, there is now, there are now two stages of review for a development plan review similar to a minor subdivision. Um, previously, there was only one stage of development plan review. So formal development plan review now consists of a preliminary and final plan. And that's really the, the major changes relating to that statute under state law.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns regarding that? Hearing none, Grant.
So administrative development plan review is also required, which would um, include one stage of review. And this is basically being proposed for home businesses. And a lot of times, home businesses would wind up being a minor land development because it would be a mixed use um, resulting in the creation of uh, fewer than six units and twenty five hundred square feet of, of floor area. So it's, it's probably not too often that we would see uh, an administrative development plan review. It would usually fall under a minor land development, but we do need to put it on the books.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns regarding this? That concludes this portion of the meeting for the, this is our second public hearing. Um, I will ask my three, three. Is there anyone that's in opposition to any of these ordinances? Is there anyone in opposition to any of these ordinances? Is it? Go ahead, Mrs. Rao. Bring the microphone down for you.
That's okay.
Uh, okay, my name is Anna Rao. I asked a question earlier about the property. What is the requirement frontage for a lot?
Three hundred feet.
Three hundred feet. So if somebody takes five feet away, you don't have three hundred feet anymore.
No one's allowed to take any frontage away from your property or any, any area of frontage, none of that.
Mrs.
Without your authorization.
Mrs. Rao.
But they already have changed that, our law, right?
No.
No, it's always been three hundred feet.
Would not encourage people to steal each other's.
So if you have a question, Mrs. Rao, about your property and you're, you, it seems that you have concerns that someone might have taken some of your property. I would suggest that you sit down either with the planner or file a report with the police department regarding that. That's not going to be settled here. Okay.
A surveyor will help you out too. So like, if you have a survey of your property and you said, okay, these are my boundaries and then you say.
I had to sell the land with a property. And now I have to prove because somebody is going to take it away.
Uh, no.
Mrs. No, no, I'm only asking for five, for five feet. You have three hundred feet frontage, right?
Yes.
And this person needs five feet or something like this.
Mrs. Rao, I, I, I might, even though I'm not like the zoning person here, I think I might be able to explain it. If you if your property is. if your property is three hundred feet, that is your property.
Yeah, it's a frontage.
And the um, the uh, what is the word I'm looking for? The uh, no, not the abut, the setback is fifty feet. So this, this other house over here can't be built within fifty.
Yes, I understand that totally.
Right.
Like it's coming away from my property. I want to put a property, a house there.
It wouldn't be coming, it wouldn't be taken away from your property. It would just be a few feet closer.
Mrs. Rao.
Forty five feet.
If this is your property, make believe, help bear with me. If this is your property and this is your neighbor's property.
Yeah.
And I, and and you want to build a new house.
Yeah.
But water on your property forces you five feet closer to the boundary on your property. Then you can go for, you can go before the the board and get permission to build five feet closer to your neighbor, you. But your neighbor can't touch your property, Mrs. Rao. That this ordinance has nothing to do.
That this property belonged to me and somebody can use it. Now, I have nothing against certain things. However, if I need three hundred foot frontage. Yeah, that's the setback, but see.
No, the setback is so when you take five percent, it's not from here to here anymore. It's here to here. They're not going on to your property.
They're just building.
Also, as long as you don't take it in your way, because otherwise I have to do something.
They are not going to take any, nothing away from you, Mrs. Rao.
Okay.
Honestly.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Rao.
It. Who do I go to?
If you think somebody took, if you think somebody took your property, I would suggest go see Chief Lindell. Okay, you go right to the police station and talk to Mrs., to Chief Lindell and she will help Mrs. Rao. I know. Um, is there, and this is my third and final, is there anyone with any opposition to any of these ordinances? Moving on. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of these ordinances? Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of these ordinances? Last time, anyone that liked to speak in favor of these ordinances? Hearing none, I will open it to the council. Um, we can, I'm going to close the public hearing, open it to the council. And what, do you have any questions, discussions? I think the large animal is going to be an ongoing.
So. That's it's sort of a separate discussion as to whether or not that should require a special use permit. The specific and objective criteria just need to be in place for each category of special use permit that's currently listed in order to allow the town to require a special use permit, because if we don't have the specific and objective criteria, everything that's by special use is permitted as of right. So um, I mean, we would need to uh, include the animals provision because it's currently listed as a special use permit, but in the future we could remove it and then it wouldn't be under that section.
Grant, it's my opinion that all the work that you're doing, the good work, the hard work, the time consuming work. Let's do it right. So you're, you're absolutely on track. Everything's good. But I think this is important. And like if we're going to have these ordinances, because what we suffered through in the past in my, in my lifetime and 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 everyone here on the council is we had vague ordinances, we had conflicts, we had contradictions. We don't need that anymore. So if we're going to re-enter into this and spend this amount of time and money, let's just get it right now. Get it right, get it, we'll, we'll figure it out. Thank you.
Anyone else? Could I ask the people in the audience to be quiet, please, because it's interfering with our, thank you. Right. So they do have that, the numbers of what they. Okay, so maybe that's something that the planning board could review.
Yeah.
Of the animals is involved. The EM comes in.
Right, right. What I think what Mrs. Ryder was referring to is maybe DEM has some guidance that the planning depart, uh, planning board could look at as far as thirty five sheep, but only, you know, five cows versus.
Yeah, Julie, if you can send it to me, that'd be great. We'll review it.
So maybe that's something we can um in the motion, consider that. For. Yeah. Or do you want to just pull that? Yeah, just send that one back?
Uh, but when I, I'll make motions, but can I shorten these up somehow by like saying?
Can we just say the ones that that we reviewed now that were just reviewed?
Yeah.
You know, you know what might be a decent idea? And I, I don't know if I'm allowed to give the council ideas.
You can give away.
Okay, so if we were to, if the council was to approve the special use permit, specific and objective criteria section with the condition that the animals section be removed, that would effectively create a use that's permitted as of right. So uh, we wouldn't be able to hold it to a special use permit standard. Just a thought.
Well, we do want to, the whole objective here is to come in compliance as close as possible.
The whole, the whole purpose of all your hard work is to come as closely into compliance with the state laws. So we don't have ambiguity, gray areas, conflict. So let's, let's send it back and get it right as best we can to benefit what we have in town and the people.
Yeah. So, so basically, we, we, what we've done through that specific and objective criteria is come, if it gets approved, we've come into compliance with state law as much as we can. We just have one straggler ordinance that um, is up for debate as to whether or not we could even issue it as a special use. So rather than just like extend the amount of time that people can get away with doing things that should be permitted by special use by right. Um, it would make more sense to, in my opinion, approve it and then review the animal one specifically later and not get hung up totally on that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, what's the pleasure of the council?
So um, to make, to make a motion for this, is this the only one that we're objecting to?
Right.
That's the only one I sent out.
You're going to turn yours on.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So if I make a motion to approve all of the recommendations from the planning board that I mean, do I just the heading, that's what I was going to do, and then just omit one? Yeah, so. All right. Yes, okay. All right. All right, I make a motion to approve the following recommendations from the planning board as presented. Um, section thirty eight dash two thirty one, non conflicting by dimension. Section thirty eight dash two seventy one, purpose of article. Section eight dash two three, stone wall protection and preservation. Section thirty eight dash three twenty one. Section thirty eight dash three twenty three, standards for granting. Section thirty eight dash three twenty four, issuance of variances and special use permits. Section thirty eight dash three twenty five, unified development review. Section thirty eight dash three twenty six, dimensional variance in conjunction with special use permits. Section thirty eight dash three fifty seven, development standards for general business development. Section thirty eight dash three fifty eight, development standards for highway commercial to H two development. Section thirty eight dash three eighty six, requirements and purpose of article. Section thirty eight dash three ninety four, site plan review for commercial and industrial development. Section thirty eight dash three ninety five, administrative development plan review.
Second.
Okay, so I, just for discussion, I omitted the one about the animal, so that we are just, it's just going to be going back to. I don't need to.
I would ask for a motion.
After this one.
Can I, can I clarify again what that ordinance is effectively doing? So if if we send this back to the planning board, we have two more weeks of people being able to put in a gravel bank by right. The, the, the getting so hungry, yes.
No, because we're approving that one. We're the only one that we left out, Grant.
There is the animal.
Was the animal one.
Oh.
We approve.
That's all of them. So what you're going to do is the second motion to prevent less the animal portion of it.
Okay.
You're going to remove.
Okay.
It could not go in this motion because this is as presented.
Okay.
Second motion for that section. Just remove.
Okay.
Thank you, Grant.
Okay. Does that help?
Yes.
Okay. There's been a motion, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a, I'll make. Oh.
Anyone opposed? Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the uh, recommendation by the planning board for changes to section thirty eight dash three twenty seven less the um criteria for animals.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I'll set, Grant.
Yeah.
Good. So now we are going to move on to the third hearing for the zoning, which is thirty eight dash twenty six standard lot of record and.
I. Um, on December fourth, twenty twenty three, the Foster election, the Foster Town Council will conduct a public hearing at six P M. At one eighty one Howard Hill Road, the townhouse building. On the agenda will be discussion of five zoning ordinances recommended by the planning board at its October fourth and October eighteenth meetings. The recommendations include amendments in addition to the Foster zoning ordinance. Section thirty eight dash two definition. Standard lot of record. Copies of the proposed actions and removals can be found online at HTTPS slash slash WWW TOWNFoster dot com slash planning department. Copies can also be obtained from the Foster Planning Office during regular business hours. The proposed amendments, additions and removals may be altered or amended prior to the close of the public hearing without further advertising as a result of further study or because of the views expressed at the public hearing. Any alteration or amendment must be presented for comment in the course of the hearing. Individuals requiring interpretive service must notify the town clerk's office at four oh one three nine two ninety two hundred at least seventy two hours in advance of the hearing date by order of the town council, Susan M. Dillon, town clerk.
That being said, I'm going to open up the third supplemental note that the listed um, ordinances have all been added along, except the twenty six, which is the standard, substandard lot of record, which was sent back to have some modification. That being said.
This, this is an ordinance that's required by state law. And um, at this point, substandard lots come with the calculation in terms of how the uses are regulated. So any further use on a substandard lot, you're able to to do it. Um, now this, the calculation comes into effect by the amount of area that the substandard lot is less than four point five nine acres. So a simple way to think of this would be two hundred thousand square feet is four point five nine acres. So if you had a substandard lot that was one hundred thousand square feet, the setback requirements, frontage requirements, uh, lot width requirements would all be decreased by fifty percent. So the setbacks would become instead of fifty feet on the side and the rear, twenty five feet. Instead of thirty five feet to the front, it would be seventeen and a half or something along those lines. Uh, the frontage would be reduced to one hundred and fifty feet. The lot width would be reduced to one hundred and fifty feet instead of three hundred feet. And the maximum building coverage, generally that's three percent of a lot, that would be increased by um, the associated percentage that the lot is smaller than the minimum lot size. So it would probably wind up being something like six percent instead of three percent. Um, and then anything that exceeds those reduced requirements, or in the case of the building coverage, the increased requirement moves forward with either a modification or a dimensional variance, whichever is applicable. And I believe the la, the last time this was uh, sent back to the planning board, it was to express displeasure with um, the state's regulations for a good reason. But at this point, we've written a letter to the Speaker of the House and so um, we would have to defer to state law on this anyway. There's currently an application for the zoning board that is going to be heard in a week where you know, this, this comes into effect. Um, the village gas station is able to expand its use. They, they, I don't know if I should say names, but there's a property on Route six where um, there, there was a uh, a canopy that was approved. Um, needing a variance previously, it was determined that they need to angle the canopy differently. But at this point, the reductions, that that lot is is so much smaller than four and a half acres. It's like thirteen percent of four and a half acres. So the setbacks become like six feet to the rear and four and a half feet to the front. And you could basically jam as much as you want on there.
Okay, so.
That's state law.
So basically, we asked for it to go back, but there's no changes that can be made.
Correct.
Because. It's going to go through anyways. Well, we stood our ground. Hmm. Is there anyone who is in opposition to this ordinance that would like to speak? Hearing none, that's the only one. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing. I will open it to the council. What is the pleasure of the council?
I. Any discussion?
No, we can't.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of the planning board to amend section thirty eight dash two twenty six, substandard lot of record as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm really getting tired of the state coming in and telling us what we got to do and what we can't do. That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Grant. Thanks for all this work. I really. You need, I, I need to apologize at this time because of this clicking on, clicking off. I, I'm sorry, it's our first night. We might get it better, but we're working on it.
Yeah. Mike is saying you can leave yours on, you can pick us up.
Okay, I didn't want it to interfere with. All right, so um, at the last council meeting, we had sent two council members to the engineering. Okay. Um, to council. Are we, I have to stop? You're recording? Thank you. Um, two council members were sent to the engineering board. I have on the agenda for two council members to go to the engineering board on the twenty seventh of February. Is I'm thinking that's you and I since they went and Cheryl's not here. So Chris and I will volunteer for that. Okay, so I'll accept a motion at this time.
Can I, okay, I'll make a motion, then can I?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for um, Denise Franco and Chris Stone to attend the.
No, David Paley.
Oh, I'm sorry, David, I thought you said him. I, I thought so.
I, I thought so. David and I because you and Chris went.
Okay. Okay, misunderstanding, alright, my motion is for Denise DeFranco and David Paleano to attend. The engineering board meeting on February twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four.
Discussion?
Um. I thought, uh, you.
Yeah, we're gonna want, I'm gonna ask for that next.
Okay.
Okay, so, um. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? At this time. Right, at this time I would ask for a motion to. Approve for discussion only, the update of your attending the.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, at the engineering board meeting that Chris and I attended. Uh, there was an, an announcement about Musa Valley. Fire Department having a game dinner on February twenty-fifth. At Rose on the Tuxit, a fundraiser, it's on their website. Um. We were talking about. Foster E M A and Foster Old Home Days, they. Will have, um, a booth at Old Home Days. They were planning for an active shooter drill. This one, this is the, this one's important. Um. Gordy, well, all of them were concerned that we haven't assigned house numbers or property numbers. To certain properties, so. Say like a land trust property has.
That wasn't the only.
No.
House numbers that are being given out.
In the wrong order.
And they're not in order.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
And. There's.
You gotta, you've got. Yeah, you got an eight, but four, four. Yes.
So like you go and. Just take.
I think it was. It was.
And.
Number eight comes up first.
You throw up to eight or seven.
And number fours. Yeah.
Isn't there a general standard, like the closer to town, the lower the number?
Don't know.
The town center?
I don't know why, they didn't know why.
It is in every other town and cities, so what, it's not, not in this town.
It had previously gone by the poll number, right, but it's.
So, what Gordy had said. Was. Originally, when they gave out house numbers, the, the. It had to come from. The zoning. The building official.
Okay. We're good?
Good.
Gordy had mentioned that the. Building official. And the. Police Department researched. The number. To just go out and drive hot, drive the road. And, and. The, the other houses had numbered already.
So that it's sequential.
So it's sequential.
So what we are losing, we're losing. The, we're losing the history, the precedent that it's by poll number?
No.
No, I think it would, I don't, I don't know how they do it, but I would think it would be. By some kind of like lot size or something, so if, if, you know, somebody subdivides and sells off a piece of land, you don't have. Uh. Like one number to split, that's probably how.
Okay, so in my case.
It's fun, how we end up with that.
Whole property, my niece and nephew, and they're one, a one forty A and they're one forty B.
Right, right.
They didn't become one forty-one because one forty-one was already established.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what you're saying, like, similar to that?
Yes, and the thing is.
What did they do?
When you.
They jumped from one forty A.
They don't know.
Forty-one to one forty, so another Wednesday.
Yeah.
Okay.
But they're not.
Like, I know in, on my road.
Yeah.
Okay. And too bad Cheryl's not here, I said road. On my road, it was.
No streets.
And, um. I'm one oh nine. The house next to me is. Believe he's. One oh six or one oh. But the new house. Is. Like one oh four.
Yeah.
So it's, and her house is after the house beside me.
It's just confusing, yeah, like if you're, if you're on a rescue call, you're going to a rescue call and you get to number eight Barb's Hill. And you're gonna go, oh. Where's number four, like you're not gonna keep going, yeah, that's their concern.
Their concern.
They were also concerned about.
I know, I see.
The land trust and different properties that aren't like a residential thing.
Right.
Having some kind of, yes.
In my opinion, you can only, you can only leave gaps in, 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 in for future if those lots are already subdivided. If they're subdivided. Ten years later, what do you do with all the subsequent?
A, B, C, right.
That's the only place you really at.
Yeah, right.
Well.
They used also was the. The. Land over on Windsor Road.
Yep.
That property has three. But three entrances, three different trails. So if they get a call. And they gotta go rescue somebody.
They don't know.
They don't know which.
Yes.
Trail they're on.
So how do other towns do it, Chris? How do other people accomplish this?
They're, they're suggesting that we. Mock them.
Hmm.
We, we put a number on.
And then have on the, on the cards and the police station and, and the dispatch, so there's a way to identify.
Chief Lindell?
The reason I wanted to speak was because I've had several fire. Officials from different departments in the area. Come to me since I started. Explaining that. And I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent that this is happening, but a lot of houses are being built. Once the house is built, they go to the town hall and they say, I just built a house on Barb's Hill Road or on Foster Center Road or wherever. And the owner assigns themselves a number. So they'll see, and. I, I wouldn't shake your head, no, yet, because.
I know, yeah, I understand what you're saying, though, I'm just saying, gee, I wonder where they got that.
I don't, well.
Because they have to go to the building official who assigns the number when they come for a building permit.
What, what? But what Chief Lindell is saying is, this is what she has been told.
Right, that's right.
What she's been told, and then we can.
And. And. And then, as a result, things don't go in sequential number. And there have been times, and maybe. Ms Rogers can attest to this, when they go to emergencies, they can't find the house, they think it's seven, nine, eleven. Thirteen, and it's seven four. Twenty-one, and. It's, it's definitely a problem, it's been a problem for the police department, and has been, and it definitely been a problem for EMS and fire, so. I don't know about the houses that are being built and then they're going into town hall and saying, we want, you know, our grandmother's birthday or whatever, a. Sentimental number, and they're assigning it as long as it's not on the street. I don't know if that's happening, but I do know that the, I have been approached multiple times by different people saying that. They've been. They've been lost, they've been essentially lost looking for that house because it's. Not anywhere near where it should be, so.
I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't mean to shake my head like I was disagreeing.
I understand, sir.
My, my thing is, is that in order to build a home, you have to go to the building official's office and take out a permit. He issues the number before you even build the house, so how they're building houses without. Numbers, I have no idea.
I don't either.
Grant is shaking his head, but I'm gonna recognize Mrs Ryder first. So, any questions for me?
Hmm, no, it's a problem.
Thank you.
We believe it's a problem.
Two things, one is, before you build a house, you have to buy the property, whoever's selling the property. Must have some kind of designation. So.
I don't know if.
When I bought mine, when I, when we built ours. Our property was part of a larger piece of property, they split it into three lots. I was baby, well, I'm sure you were too, I was R R one box thirty-three B.
Yes.
I, you know, so, and, and the lady next to me was R R one box thirty-three A. And then, you know, so it was A, B, C. Then it changed to one oh nine and a half. And then it changed to one oh nine.
I just noticed that, because I love Zillow, and even in Foster, there'll be.
Zero.
A vacant lot, and it will have a number, no. On Zillow, they, somebody's given it.
I've seen more zero, I don't go on Zillow, but.
Right, I'm, but when you go on the we- on the database, whatever. Then it, yeah, it's all zero, but somebody's given it a number.
See, Zillow could be in order.
On Zillow.
File where they could have it.
Maybe, but my other question was, all of these that have all the zeros and some of the, the dirt roads or the back roads, there's a lot of zeros. I'm wondering, um, in case of brush fire or something, you say go to zero Windsor Road.
I think that's what they were talking about.
And, you know, which one, right.
But here's, here's, one of the problems is. That if you go back and try to correct those numbers. Those numbers already have an address.
Legal, they're legal documents now.
So, so. Now that homeowner. Changes the number, he has to go to the post office and change his address.
And his mortgage and his.
Right.
Grant, Grant, you had something, you need to come forward, thank you.
Um, so I, I don't know entirely the full process of assigning address numbers, but I am aware that. Properties that don't have a house or any kind of business, it's just, it's vacant land, those are either zero. Say Danielson Pike, for example, or it would just be simply Danielson Pike, I've seen it both ways, but you would still get the concept. Um, in terms of new lots being created, um, say you had a Platten lot that was six thirteen. Um, and that got subdivided into two additional lots, um, what the, what they do is they say, okay, so if there is no. Six thirteen A that's existing, one of them will be six thirteen A, the other one will be six thirteen B. If there was already a six thirteen A existing, it would just be. Six thirteen B and six thirteen C. Um, and so that's the way you could, um, I, I don't know exactly. If giving emergency responders a Platten lot number would make sense in the case of a brush fire, I'm, I'm not positive, it, it might not help.
They'd have to have a map with them to find out where. So I, I think.
So, um. I, I, I am aware that, um. I, I don't think it's the building official who, who issues the address, I think once a house is constructed, Susan Boucher would be the one who, who knows all of this. She knows how the addresses get formed, and, and other towns, generally, it seems like, um. One side of a, like the, one side of a street at, at an intersection would be one, and then the next one would be three. Five, seven, and then across the street it would be opposite, and Foster, I've seen, like, there, there is no consistency in terms of. One side of the road is even and one side.
Your mailbox is all on one side of the road, everybody's mailbox is on one side of the road.
My address is technically. Eighty-six. And it used to be a half.
Right.
Now it's a B. Though when it truly sells. Fire station, which is across the street, is eighty-six.
Yeah, yeah, so the, but we need to come up with something.
Yeah.
Some sort of standard. This is how you get your.
Yeah, I, I think Su- Susan Boucher is the one to talk to, she's.
Thank you. Keith, not O'Keefe, I keep calling.
Bob's Hill, so I, I hear this, and I, I can just tell you, it goes on one. Four seventeen, fourteen and a half, like fifty-four A.
Yeah.
Eighteen, and there's no. Oh, no, but I, I.
Yeah.
Delivery people stop all the time, um, at the house saying, can you just like, point me in the right direction?
It's very confusing.
Go in the police or, or arrest, you have to respond, they have no.
No idea.
No.
But the problem is, like, um, like Heidi said, is you, you have your mortgage.
Right.
With that number on it, it's not. Oh, well, we're gonna switch things around.
Right, yeah, it's not, and that, that is a concern. What, what we have to get something for EMS and police and. Mrs Ryder.
Let's move the podium over to you.
Yeah, I, I would just wanna say, on border roads, like, um, Shippy Schoolhouse.
Mm-hmm.
One side of the road is all high numbers because that's Connecticut.
Right.
And the other side is low numbers, so you might go seventeen eighty-four, that, 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 you know.
That's same for me.
Yeah.
Like, Russell Street is Connecticut.
Right. It's not something we're gonna stop tonight. And it is, uh, uh, it has been brought to my attention a couple of times, because it is something that's of concern.
I, I do have just one suggestion. I don't know how widespread this is a problem, but if you on the head of the street, like at Bob's Hill. If you put, I mean, it's going to cost money, but if you put some sort of ledger where. You mock the houses accurately, as they're mocked now. Um, someone going down that road would immediately know. Okay, it's gonna go from one to four to seventeen to hundred and six.
That's fine for UPS, but what about our EMS?
Well, anything at the head of the road, so anyone going.
So they're gonna have to stop, look. And you're, you're wasting time.
I, 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 I mean, that's just something I thought.
Yeah, that, I think that's great for UPS, but I'm not sure it's so good for EMS.
It's not like we're there, we're sure to save purpose.
We see that in the stores, like Lowe's has aisles marked with all.
So. The, the problem is. They're going down Bob's Hill Road. You can put that list at the thing. The ambulance is going. It's snowing, it's a blizzard.
Yep.
They've, they're not gonna find a house.
Right, yeah.
I just don't know how to. Said, like everybody said, it's legal documents, there's no way you're gonna change it now, these homes that are existing, one seventeen fifty-four, we're gonna have to live with it.
The only thing I can suggest. Because we can't change, we can't change what exists, we can. Um. I was just talking to Grant, and. Any vacant properties that are not built on, that could, God forbid, go up in flames. Those owners of, maybe something can go out from the town that those owners can register, and I'm using that term loosely, but I don't know if register would be the word. But. Register their property with us at the fire depart- with the police or the fire, so we would know. So it's not gonna be zero Danielson Pike, it's gonna be lot. Six eighteen or whatever it is, if, if they're vacant. Other than that, maybe the town could. Put something out to the townspeople.
Mm-hmm.
To. Make. Their numbers much more visible. Somehow, whether it's on their mailbox.
A requirement for better posting?
Yeah, but like, like. Put it out there, put it out in the Gazette, put it out on, on, Facebook, put, I don't care, put it out with a sign, but somehow have better. Visibility.
Hmm.
Due to, and let them know, due to the fact that our numbers don't go in order, and there have been some problems.
How, how does nine one one do it? Because I know my address is one oh nine.
Okay.
And I've spoken to you about that before.
Correct.
Nine one one has it as one ten.
Right.
The town has it as one ten. But my mailing address is one oh nine. How does nine one one do that as far as vacant lots? Because they must have to have.
Oh, nine one one wouldn't have a vacant lot because there's no electricity, there's nothing, there's no GPS for that lot. So in other words, if you call from your home. Whether they have you as one ten or two ten, they're gonna know, they're gonna be able to ping where your phone is coming from, okay, they're gonna ping. Even if you get into a car accident and you land in the woods, they can ping the house across the street and say. She's in the woods, but she's across the street from six eighty-two.
Okay, cuz I was wondering, you know, a vacant lot.
So a vacant lot is not gonna, a vacant lot, no one's gonna call from a vacant lot. Somebody, a passerby is gonna call from a vacant lot, or a neighbor will call from a vacant lot, a vacant lot, and then they're gonna ping that, and they're gonna say. So that's how they'll get the, the coordinates on that, so I don't know, I think as a town, as, as a council, and, and I'll be willing to. Come up with some creative ideas as to get everybody, get our people. To mark their mailboxes or their phone poles, or their cat or whatever.
They did it through the fire departments before, we had the blue signs, reflective, the reflective signs that you could buy. To put at the end of your driveway.
And if we put that out there, that it is a safety issue.
I have seen a large.
Right.
Sign at the end of them, the end of an access road. With all the address numbers right there, so if you take that road, these are the numbers that are on that road.
It, it's something to explore.
That's a good idea.
And we can.
That's what Mr. Keith is saying.
Right.
Yeah, I grew up with a full number too.
So, so we can get creative, but I'll be willing to sit with anybody that wants to do it.
Grant, come on up.
Ruins a loser.
Actually, they're important.
You ruin everything.
So this, uh, this is just going to be short. Um, George Dumont knows, uh, the, the building code. I think I've heard him say that, um, house numbers need to be marked with like a three inch, um, number or something like that. So he, he would be the one to ask about, how do we actually make the numbers more visible? I would think three inch number is pretty big. Um, and.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, but is, I don't know, we would maybe just encourage people to comply with that.
Mm hmm.
But I think Mr. Keith and Chief had a good idea, I think, to, to get, to have a small sign at the head of a road that says, these numbers are on this road, would at least direct somebody in emergency services, you're on the right track. You, you're getting close. Then hopefully they see the fire.
All right.
Let's.
They must have GPS and Google Maps on us.
My, my GPS doesn't take me to my house.
All right, do you want to go on?
Yes, please.
So, um, another thing that they were discussing was, uh, stipends for, uh.
You're not, you're not on.
I'm sorry.
Uh, stipends for, uh, firefighters per call, that's something they may be looking at, which, I mean, when you think about it, it's.
Mr. Rathburn had approached me on that.
Well, uh, worth it. The, uh, ambulance corps, we always got stipends before we went paid, so something that they were talking about, um, the tower at Woody Louden, they're really hoping that that goes through and, um, you know, it would improve communications. Um, and they mentioned, this is not my wheelhouse. I don't know if you guys, you were there, Chris, about the eight hundred radios for the PD and you know, but apparently like, uh, DPW doesn't work on that. And they were saying that they would have to lease.
Right.
Like maybe lease a radio system or something. Um, I mean.
I, I, I've been at meetings where they've discussed that, that um, DPW is on a different.
Frequency.
They're going to be.
It, right.
Switched.
Yeah.
And so DPW.
And they're going to lose everything.
And there are times when DPW is called for, especially in the winter.
Hmm.
For EMS or
To plow.
To plow, to get to, so.
So that was something.
That's going to have to be considered.
Yeah, I think, and what they were suggesting was, uh, leasing a radio system. I mean, like I said, that, that is not my wheelhouse. I don't know how.
You have to extend planning board meetings. Mr. Carpenter will tell you all.
Okay, and then.
Very knowledgeable.
All right, uh, then they were talking about, uh, cap, and the capital budget. Our Knox boxes are going to be outdated and eventually, right now, they are working. I think there's one, did they say one that wasn't working, right?
Yes, it's happened, as they have, what'd they say, eight?
I believe, I believe it was eight and one is not working.
One in each ambulance.
There were two, yeah, that I have.
Right, that they can't get into anymore.
That's not good.
So.
Not good.
Not good.
So they will.
They were talking, um, about that as maybe a capital expenditure, because you, if you can't get the key, you can't get in and stop the fires.
Okay. Thank you. Keep this in mind, what good notes people take. Um, moving on. We did, oh, the Rhode Island two fifty, I said I was going to reach out and I forgot to reach out to the, um, the committees I was going to reach, I was going to, yeah, the commission, I was reaching out to recreation and to old home days, and I know, um, Mrs. Ryder spoke to preservation, I believe.
Right, and so we, uh, and for the video clip of the meeting of that section.
Okay. There you go. So, um, I will speak to recreation and old home days. Post on next to that. Um, we also, the last meeting, we were talking about the technical review committee, which, um, did you move? Hi, Grant, I can't see. Thank you. Um, that we was brought forward last time by Grant and we were curious as to whether or not it needs to go through the charter, et cetera. And, um, council had looked it up and it's similar to a subcommittee. So, um, at the next meeting, I'll have it on the agenda so that there can be appointments made and we can have discussion, but in general, it would be the planning board members that, as it would be a subcommittee, as you suggested, at six o'clock versus seven o'clock and et cetera. Okay? So that ends that. Brings us to new business, the Homestead Exemption Act. Good Miss Russ, you've been waiting for this, so.
Waiting is a broad term, so we are in the middle of a statistical revaluation, and as everybody knows, the property values of all prop, of all residential property has skyrocketed. So we're looking at an increase in property values for, um, across the board, around thirty-six to forty percent based on vision and based on the fair market values of, of sold property. So that's how they use, that's how they determine it. They, they're currently analyzing all the sold property, the new property that we've built, et cetera. And then they do an overall increase for everybody else townwide. So what happens with that is, in theory, your property values go up, so we're not talking about our current budget right now, so let's assume that your budget is going to remain the same for this analysis. So in a statistical revalue, property values go up. You're trying to raise the same amount of money, your property tax rate, your mill rate goes down, and that's how it all works. So what happened is we have a treaty, a long-term treaty, a ten-year treaty with Providence Water. In the treaty, Providence Water has stabilized their assessed value at eighty-four hundred dollars per acre. They have over twenty-one hundred to twenty-two hundred acres of property. So as everybody else's property value goes up, their property will stay the same, but they will then benefit from the decrease in the tax rate. So my concern was, now this has happened over, I mean, we have a statistical reveal every three years, a full reveal every nine. So it's happened in the past, but we haven't had this kind of a change in
Huge difference.
Values. So what I determined about a month ago in a panic was that they're going to benefit pretty extensively from this rebound. And I have a problem with that, as I'm sure most residents would. So therefore that rate increased, so, so if they stay the same and we're still trying to raise the amount, same amount of money and their taxes go down, everyone else who's not on a freeze would have to pay a little bit more to make up that difference. It, to clarify, um, Providence Water is our largest taxpayer in the town of Foster. So obviously that would have an impact.
I'm sure.
So without anybody's taxes, so if we were trying to raise the same amount of money, all taxpayers, residential taxpayers would probably see an increase of about one to two percent on their rate or, or on their bill, just to make up the difference. So I've done quite a bit of research, I've involved the, um, auditor general, I've asked him, we've asked some, some of the states, uh, our, our state reps and, um, I asked neighboring communities for assistance, like anything, any idea that we would, we could do. So, um, obviously Providence Water is not going to enter into an agreement that where in the last year of our treaty, we're not going to be able to renegotiate this year early, where they would have it be retroactive. That's not in their, that's not to their benefit. They're not going to care about that. So, um, what we were looking at is a homestead exemption. So what we can't do is many communities have different rates, they have different rates for, um, commercial real property versus residential real property. They have different rates for all of the, like, different categories. We can't do that because it's in the treaty that they anticipated that, that we can't split our rate to try to like. Yes, however, we could offer a homestead exemption. And a homestead exemption is one that basically, so you're taking, if you are a resident and you live in that property, you live in, you, you are owner occupied, you have an assessed value based on the statistical, say, of a million dollars, but we could offer, say, a twenty percent exemption for all homeowners who fill out this form that said they live and occupy in the building that they own, the residence that they own. That brings their property down so it wouldn't impact the overall rate as much as it will if they're assessed at a hu, at a higher tax, re, um, higher value. It's all about the value. So by bringing their values down to a more reasonable amount, we won't be able to offer an exemption that's great enough for that. We can't offer thirty-six percent in theory if everybody's first, if everybody's value went up thirty-six percent, you wanted to keep everything the same, then you would offer thirty-six percent. It, that's not recommended by anybody. Usually it's ten, twenty percent. And there, this is not something that everybody does. It's only really beneficial, as Grant had pointed out, I talked to Grant about this. Why would we do that? Because ninety-five percent of all residents who live in Foster live and own. This is, this is a, um, an exemption that they generally give communities who have high rental property. Now, Agansha has one, for example, because many of the owners don't live in the property, they rent it for six to eight months a year. So, and they make decent amount of money. So it's a little bit of, it's to benefit the people who actually live and work and, and, uh, own the property that they're living in.
So you're trying to close a loophole.
I'm trying to call, so there's no value to us to have this really, except for this Providence Water situation.
Which is huge.
We could phase it out over time, so giving us time to.
Using the numbers you projected, thirty percenting, using the thirty percent increase for home, homeowners.
Thirty-six.
And then the decrease for them, what are we talking real money?
Real money, it would probably be, I can't talk.
Generally speaking.
Generally speaking, I'm talking one and a half percent. Everybody else's tax rate, taxes would go up one and a half percent overall, but there's no way to tell because.
Well, I mean.
It's all, one, one hundred percent an estimate because the statistical reveal is still in progress. So I just did a lot of analysis on if everybody went up thirty to forty, thirty-six to forty percent, all real property values subtracted out the, the frozen properties. The last problem is what they're seeing. So I did a lot of analysis to see, but it's about a one and a half percent increase for everybody else with zero increase in levy.
So what I'm, what I'm, I, I didn't say, I didn't ask the question correctly. When we're done and the dust settles. The property's values are adjusted and the average tax, right, going to the phone, the average is adjusted. How much, giving them the windfall benefit of this adjustment that they're going to get because of this loophole.
Yeah.
What are we actually losing? A million a year?
They could, they only pay four hundred and fifty. I mean, we're a small.
Four hundred and fifty what?
Thousand dollars in taxes, about four hundred.
So it's going to drop them down to four hundred?
No, probably more like, they probably save about a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you.
If that's what you're asking, yes. And then that, I would like to close the loophole. It's, it's just, it's the principle really, and I'm trying to save the money for the, our, our taxpayers, our residents, and there's no other way to do it this year. So based on what, um,
Well, listen, Kelly.
The auditor general had sta, stated, he went and.
Kelly, there is no choice because why in the world would they benefit to the point where I'm going to pay more money to offset the loss that they just gave us?
Mm hmm.
They just taking money from us and I have to make it up.
Right.
It doesn't make any sense.
My other concern is going forward, we've now given them this, now they're going to have, say, they save a hundred thousand, so instead of paying four twenty, they're paying three twenty. Now we're going into negotiations and we, we're going to try to restructure this. We have to try to restructure the way this treaty is. We had based it on other communities, they've learned from this and they've actually restructured, situat has a different type of treaty that locks them into the levy. That's a great idea. Instead of locking them into the assessed value, you're locking them into what they're paying. They can't, and their, their increase is based on like your tax levy, so if you go up three percent, they would go up three percent. That's more reasonable because this fluctuation in assessed values, when their assessed value is stable for ten years is, is a hardship for us. And also if they benefit this year by a hundred thousand dollars and we go to restructure, they've now saved a hundred thousand dollars. They're going to want to lock in at that one hundred thousand dollar less payment, right? So their levy now is based on a that much lower.
You understand this better than I do, but they're acting as a business, they're profiting from that land. So why aren't we, why aren't we structuring the settlement, the agreement like?
See, because they can't be taxed as a business because their business is land. It's land and water.
But there's a product on that land, water.
I one hundred percent agree with you. So we have a blended rate.
You have that around with.
Of eighty-four hundred dollars.
You're right.
So basically, their concept and belief is that the land that they own should be at a farm forest assessed value. The farm forest assessed value per acre of land is one hundred and fifteen dollars. Their water, which is their commercial property, should be cons, should be higher. So we're doing a blended, we're using a blended rate across the board of eighty-four hundred dollars value per acre. Because there's really no way to state this. They've obviously threatened that if we go to court, they're going to say that the majority of, now the, Sutuit, for example, has more water on there in their town than we have. We have more land in our town than water. We used a very similar blended rate to, I want to say, I think it was the Sutuit treaty
Mm hmm.
ten or eleven years ago when we started this.
Yeah.
So now they don't have that at all. They have a completely different style of, of taxation. But at the time, their argument was, I don't want to say they were ninety-eighty-six hundred dollars per acre. We settled for eighty-four because their theory was that they have more water and that is their commercial property versus we have more land, which is more of the surrounding area. Our, our, our argument is that all businesses have to have land around it to support it. Walmart has a parking lot that in essence is their parking lot. Because you cannot have pure water if you don't have the land surrounding it. So there was a lot going into that, but this is how we settled it. Eighty-four hundred dollars um, blended rate per acre. We have one more year to go. I don't want them to save a hundred thousand dollars next year. And then we try to negotiate the year after on a lower amount.
We're only going to end.
As a basis of a lower amount. And also, we are going to increase our taxes this year, one hundred percent, not a hundred percent increase, but we are definitely going to have to increase our taxes this year. So why start with an increase to each taxpayer as it, as we start? So I'm trying to minimize this.
Are you looking for a motion from the council?
To move forward. I don't want to go through all the effort and I'm going to have to, and Bob, Julia, we're going to have to really look into it. We don't need to go in front of the states, not a state legislated, um,
Agreement.
Agreement, we do have to have an ordinance, so we have to go through the effort to have an ordinance in place.
Yeah, yeah.
Julia, what would a motion?
And we have very little time to do it, so you all know, because we have to have it in place before we set our tax rate, and there'll be forms to fill out because all of the residents who want to clear, uh, to claim this exemption will have to fill out a form.
So are you looking at for this coming fiscal?
Yes, if you don't do it this year, there's no reason to.
What would the motion be, look like, Julia, for Homestead Exemption Act?
Well, it would be an ordinance.
It's an ordinance.
You don't need a motion.
Okay, no, thank you.
Okay. So we do not need, but Grant is there hearing.
Grant.
Grant is probably writing it now.
Well, Kelly, uh, said that she had been working on an ordinance and she just asked if she was on the right track with basically.
Also now you're going to wait on it and it's just too?
No. No, let me be clear. I'm looking at researching an ordinance, but definitely not writing it for sure, because we're, we're looking at multiple towns who have this and trying to structure something that's similar.
Yeah.
We want to keep it as simple as possible because we are a very simple community. And the fact that, as you said, ninety-five to ninety to ninety-five percent of our residents should qualify for this and frozen property would be exempted from this. They wouldn't be able to claim an additional exemption.
I just have a quick question. On the Homestead Act, in a lot of other, um, towns and cities, um, it's, there's, um, like a re, there's a residency requirement, obviously.
Yes.
Um, but it's not, so it could be from this point forward, but it doesn't necessarily have to carry forward to new residents coming in. Is that what you're proposing or would it just be?
No.
Something that would go forward for any resident that comes forward in the town.
Anyone in there.
There's no ordinance right now.
So when.
All right.
So it might say you have to live in town.
All right.
Right.
So many years.
It's, it'll work.
Right. And honestly, um, I don't see it as something that we're going to keep forever because it's an extra burden for the taxpayer to have to annually file for this, and then as you, i- i- it's an extra burden. File for this and then as you, i- i- it's an extra burden and ninety to ninety-five percent, right, Grant, isn't that what you had said? About ninety to ninety-five percent of our. Right, so why are we gonna ask ninety percent of our residents to fill out a form when all we're trying to do, which really, if everybody fills it out. Take Providence Water out of the component, uh, out of the situation and there's really no value to it anymore. The only value is because we're negotiations, if we can settle their negotiations in a different way, we would no longer need it.
Well, in in other cities and towns, like, so I would fill it out now. Um, and I would only fill it out once, only have to fill it out once. And then if I install my property, then the new owner of that property would then have to fill it out.
Yeah, I don't know how that would work because. But just because, I don't know how the, that doesn't make sense to me because.
It's something that we'll have to have to research.
Because what if you no longer own it?
Thank you.
How do you prove it? Because you haven't sold it, then you don't live it.
I would at this time accept a motion to discuss dates for budget workshops, upcoming budget workshops. So if you could get out your calendars, it's not on our agenda. But we need to discuss only possible dates, so I need a motion to add it to, for discussion purposes only. So at this time I would accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to add um, budget workshop dates for special.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
I.
I oppose, get your calendars out.
I think the fifth is good.
I was looking at the fifth of the seventh for the first meeting, because it's a non, the Thursday, it's a non-council meeting week. And we have an extra weekend between because our, here, um, the twenty-ninth is on February.
It'll be Tuesday, March fifth at at four P M.
March fifth or Thursday, March seventh, either of those days or both, really, you could meet the first time and then start peeling away the budget two days later, but.
Four o'clock?
Four.
Last year we met at four, how did that work out for everybody?
So.
Four thirty?
Four thirty or five o'clock?
Okay. Yeah, you struggled last year, you, you're, I remember that, to get here at that time.
Okay, I have to, I I'll make arrangements, go ahead.
No, I'm asking if the third or the seventh, one or both, like just to start the process. Yes.
Unless it's a.
I'm asking if the fifth works.
Look, okay, if I can zoom because it's a workshop, not a council meeting, thank you.
And if you think about it too, we also don't vote.
Right.
On the budget until later on, so it's really just a.
Right, so if I can zoom it.
I see, no, right, I mean, we're not voting.
I'll get in touch with the other grandmother and say, hey.
Whether or not they vote is not, that'll just come here with respect to that, so I have to confirm if they are or they're changes.
Okay.
Okay, so if you can, if it, if it doesn't, we'll still stay with it, I'll make arrangements.
Okay, but which day were you? No, that's, that's a you thing, Jay.
Kelly, Kelly will, Kelly will send you an invitation to come.
So the fifth and the seventh, if we can get it out of the way, is that good?
Yeah.
Both days?
Yeah.
Get it out of the way early?
Yep, one way or the other.
Not gonna be early.
It never happens, never.
No, no. And on the seventh, okay.
So you're gonna do the fifth and the seventh at four thirty, and if you could pick two or three other days, um, just so I can put them out there, two, pick two, two. And I mean, weeks later, so that if you'll have questions, people will need to get more data and some data is just simply not available.
We have a council meeting on the fourteenth.
You're talking March?
Yes.
Yeah.
So um.
About the twenty, how about the nineteenth and twentieth, or the nineteenth and twentieth?
It would be.
Are we on the wrong weeks for you, Denise, so every week, okay, so.
So it it's, it's all right.
So if we do, if we do the third, the fifth and the seventh and she's more available the following week, can we start like maybe adding a Tuesday on the same week we, and then skip a week?
Yeah, okay, so Tuesday, the twelfth.
Yeah, that works. Does that work?
So far.
Okay. And if it can be zoomed, then I'll open to any.
And then we can add dates as we go, it's just, I'm just trying to put a few in.
So fifth, seventh and twelfth.
You wanna shoot, you wanna try it out right now, shoot for twentieth, the twentieth on a Wednesday at four thirty?
Is there, is there planning or zoning?
On which one's that?
The twentieth?
The Wednesday, the twenty-first, there's a planning board.
That, no, we're talking March.
Okay, so yeah, but if it's the third Wednesday, then yes.
Isn't, excuse me, isn't um, the public hearing one of those things?
It's the si, the, yes, the sixth. Okay, so.
I'll pen that, I'll pencil that in, we can discuss it as we go, we can add dates.
Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, because none of us have.
Well, here's the thing, you also have to have a public hearing on the budget, so according to my schedule. Um, proposed, I'm proposing your public hearing on the budget on the twenty-eighth.
Of March?
So do you want to do the twenty-sixth then? Four thirty to twenty-sixth?
Were we doing the three twenty, if you do three twenty, then we can determine then if you wanna meet on the twenty-sixth.
We didn't do three twenty because they have a zoning, the planning would be Wednesday, well, there are Wednesday.
Well, you can do it at four thirty and just have to be done by seven.
That's true.
Or we could do it Thursday, the twenty-first.
Is that, do you have a budget meeting that, do we have a town council meeting the twenty-first?
Uh, no, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Alright, so I'm gonna put three twenty-one.
Excellent.
At four thirty. And then what we can determine if you feel uncomfortable, because you don't have to have a finalized budget to have a public hearing on it.
Right.
You really don't, you're not adopting.
When do we have to adopt by?
You have to adopt, there are two dates I have, the earlier one being four eleven, the later one being four eighteen is your drop dead date for adopting the budget according to the charter and state law.
Shoot for elevens.
Okay, the problem is again, um, when you adopt a budget, generally speaking, you have to kind of know what your tax rate's gonna be, all of this resolution and ordinance would have to be in place. You'd have to have an idea of where we're going with the police station, not to add that into it as well, but that's a big impact on our budget, so that's a lot. So we're, we're gonna try, but right now I'm putting down for sure, three, five and three, seven. If you wanna cancel at three, five, because you feel like you're not gonna have any new information for three, seven, you can do so at the time. Um, three, twelve and three, twenty-one, so we have, we have dates to to me discuss.
Thank you. That was a good discussion, no vote was taken. Um, before we close, I do wanna thank everyone, either on Zoom or in the audience, putting up with us with the clicking on, clicking off, uh, starting late. It's a work in progress, we will get it, we will remember to turn on, turn off. Thank you. That being said. All in favor, I oppose, thank you all.
Wow, what a sinking ship that became at the end there. Here, give me one second to make sure this gets shut off and I will explain. Uh, yeah, I'll, let me make sure this shuts off and I will explain a lot further.